Call the meeting to order, please rise. And Clerk Blau, would you please lead us in the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Vera?
Yes?
I had to put the address in the recorder. I apologize.
We will take a quick pause so that our clerk can power up her recorder.
I didn't check it before.
That happens. At least you've got a backup. No problem.
I didn't expect the batteries to go out. At least it was at the beginning.
That's right. All right, and Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Present.
Trustee Dropka?
Present at counter floor.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Present.
Trustee Loufer? Supervisor Wilt?
Here.
Let the clerk, uh, the records note that Clerk Blau is also in attendance.
Thank you. You have in your packets the minutes of the February 13th Board of Trustees' Meeting. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes of February 13th.
I'll second.
Motion, second, to accept the minutes of the February 13th Board of Trustees' Meeting. Are there any additions or corrections or any comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the approval, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. The minutes of the Board of Trustees' Special Budget Meeting from February 22nd are also in your packets. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion, we approve the Board of Trustees' Special Budget Meeting of February 22nd, 2018.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Board of Trustees' Special Budget Meeting, February 22nd, 2018. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Are there any communications?
There are none. Can you believe it?
It happens sometimes. All right, um, are there any visitors' remarks before we head into, we'll deal with the unfinished business first tonight, especially the grants that were deferred from our last meeting? Is there any commentary before we go to those? Then let's start with grants. Boy Scouts of America. We did get some supplementary material and we have the District Director here to speak to the matter.
Hi, yes, can we thank you again for having me here tonight? So, um, as I provided some additional material for your consideration of some of the itemized cost of what it, um, cost to have the programming in the local community. I also have a local, uh, one of our local leaders, Assistant Scout Master from Troop 24, to just share a few of, um, some personal stories from his side from, as a leader. So, Tim Lager, would you mind just share a few briefly of what your role in the community and as a leader?
Certainly.
And your experience?
Troop 24 from?
The Presbyterian Church.
If you would step, step to the microphone because this is recorded, thank you.
Certainly, yes, uh, so, yes, Troop 24 is the Riverside troop based out of the Riverside Presbyterian Church. And I was actually a, um, an Eagle Scout out of that troop in, back in the eighties, just to show my age. But, um, I think that one of the, I think the merits that you would have from, from approving this sort of grant is in, uh, it's really in creating some engagement between the scouts who are in the troop and the community. So, for example, we have service projects, we work with, um, we have a Thousand Trees project where we plant seeds in the fall. We have Hoffman Dam projects where we perform service in cleaning up the dam. We have several recent Eagle Scouts, there's a box out, out there actually, who's a scoutmaster's son, who is performing, um, an Eagle Scout project, uh, with the Catholic Charities, um, to collect, uh, things for, for that, uh, cause. And so, all of these things sort of connect the scouts of, uh, Troop 24 in Riverside with everything else that's going on in Riverside. So, uh, that's, that's one arm. And then another aspect of, is it really in forming, forming the, the youth, these young boys into, um, giving them the opportunity to develop all of the principles through the scouting program. Uh, in addition to the eventual integration of, uh, or I should say, uh, broadening the program to include, uh, girls. Because as you may know, the Boy Scout program is on the forefront of bringing girls into the program so that they can join as well. So, it's really somewhat path breaking because we've had the, we've had Girl Scouts and we've had Boy Scouts, we've had mixed gender things like Explorers and Venturers. Um, in this case, the Boy Scouts have made a decision to say, yes, we'll, we'll make an all-inclusive, uh, boy and girl model. And Troop 24 will embrace that, uh, soon, not yet, because as Manuel can attest, the council level is working out how that will be effective across the, the genders. But, so it will become a more, even a broader, more inclusive program. So, this kind of, uh, this kind of funding will just help all that come together, really.
Thank you. Trustees, do you have any questions?
I think, I think one of the poll over questions that we had from last time was specifically, well, two parts, I think, that you're requesting more money than last year and in previous years. And then why, the reason for that? And then specifically, what are the amounts that you're requesting going to be used for? Do you have a breakdown, an itemized breakdown that totals up to the amount that you're, uh, you're asking for? So, when, so if we were to give you the money, how would that be used specifically?
Yes, thank you for your question. So, as you saw, um, they provided a breakdown of just some of the feedback that we received from our recent survey to all the parents that participated from that. And what the, the parents was found through that survey is what they found more of value was the adult background checks. So, as we discussed in, in, with that letter, I projected an increase of 40 more families this year that we will be serving out of the Riverside Township. Um, with those youth also comes more adults. So, we need to conduct those background checks for those adults itself. As you see, the breakdown there of the cost is $1,200, just because it's not just state background checks that we run, um, just in Illinois, we have to run them across multiple states as well. So, the cost is pretty high. So, um, if, if it was an itemized item, specifically, I, I guess the, um, the committee will be able to make a decision as to where to apply those, but it's those accrued costs of running the program to what it means to, at the local community level. So, it's, it's really tough to just specifically put it towards one item where the need is collectively needed across the board. Um, and we didn't even touch, again, as Tim said, we will be including girls coming soon. Um, and the Boy Scout side, in the fall, we actually have, will begin with the girls, the Cub Scout level, which is the first through fifth grade. And these numbers do, do not reflect those programs as of yet, because we're still in, in the phase of identifying the leadership, which we now have to have female leadership for those programs as well. So, more background checks will be conducted as well. So, that's just, um, from the, from the standpoint of the current leadership, that is one of the items that we're providing. And in addition with that, um, the response was that the, we, we just redid a new website which provides also information, calendar, training dates for local leaders, local things that are taking place in the community, and that's where they found of value. So, that's what we need some assistance with, continue to run those type of services for our local families as well, that they could see of value, so.
Is every adult, like, um, either, like, the fathers of some of the scouts who run it, are they run a background check?
That's correct. So, they have to run through a process, just like Tim as well, they fill out a, adult application and they have to take a youth protection training as well, that is mandatory for every adult that is engaged with the youth in the program. Um, one of the new items that we implemented as well was every adult taking place, um, taking, uh, participating in an activity that will be around youth for more than 72 hours. So, what's coming up is day camp, summer camps, so, packed troop, uh, all of our units here in Riverside are super active in the summer months, they're, they all engage in the outings. So, all of the adults have to be registered if they want to participate and go with their kids as well. Even if it's a drop off, I'll, I'll drop off a little Johnny on a Friday and pick him up on the, on the Sunday, they have to also fill out those applications and we have to conduct a background check because they have to also ride along with the kids and have them in their vehicles. So, we have to have these background checks conducted, conducted on all of these adults as well.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have, um, a more concerning question, and, uh, it's that our money will go to an umbrella group of which our constituents, our residents, are only a part of. Um, we had a similar grant from Indian Guides Federation, and what they had to do is say, okay, the money we get will go to the local tribes for background checks, for scout cabin rental, um, for those, the recruiting, but it would be used for the people, the troops in Riverside, not going to offset overhead for, uh, office space that the whole, uh, Federation uses. So, we, uh, one thing that this board is really, uh, concerned about is making sure that the grant money that we give goes to Riverside Township residents. Uh, so, I would just like to have some assurance that it's not just going to the umbrella group because one of the troops happens to be from Riverside, but that it's going through the umbrella group as more pass-through to come to the local troops directly, or not directly, but exclusively.
Sure, and I appreciate that concern. So, one of the items that we, um, went through recently is, we went through a merger. So, we brought in four different councils to formulate, formulate what it's now, um, Pathway to Adventure Council. So, now we serve just over 23,000 families, right, across the Chicago Line area. So, some of the benefits to doing that is the ability to streamline some of the items, right? So, one of the items that we've done in the past three years with this, um, being able to come together as a merger, we've been, for the first time in decades, we've been able to actually put marketing pieces and increase the amount of effectiveness to recruit new families. So, just in Riverside as well, we've recruited just over 100 new families in the past three years. That's due to the marketing. And the beauty of that is that everyone under the umbrella is ever, is able to defer those costs and not, I'm not, I don't go to the units here in Riverside and I don't, we don't charge them for any flyers, any airplanes, any marketing material, they just reach out to us as a local council and we provide those supplies for them. Uh, for the past three years, we've been providing, uh, free rockets to them, to those units as a recruitment tool. So, we've had over 100 families receiving from those benefits. So, that's one of the perks to having a larger council and being able to streamline, because we're able to do large items like that and defer those costs to the local units. So, that's the whole point. Right now, the cost to the local unit to register for a family in scouting, it's only $36 for the year. That's where the council takes the bulk of that and pays the, the difference. So, I understand that, um, sometimes we look at items and say, how can these monies benefit directly these families from our town, right? Because that's, quite frankly, as me as a taxpayer, I'm thinking the same way, how our money's being utilized, right? But, and that's the beauty of consolidating some of those efforts is that we defer those costs, we don't put it on the, on the backs of the leaders because, just like Tim, he's a volunteer. So, we have just over 50 local volunteers here and we don't go to them and say, hey, guys, you guys need to pick up the tab on these extra items. So, we look for outside, uh, outside resources that are able to help us to defer those costs to those leaders that we're already asking them to give of their time, so.
So, your group does 23,000 members?
It's an, um, a, an actual rocket, like a spaceship rocket. So, the kids, uh, by signing up got to shot off a rocket into space. Which, by the way, we actually were the only council, by the way, that actually put a project on Mars. They actually just shipped, uh, sent another project out there with SpaceX this past summer, so. So, our kids.
So, you're 23,000 members and the grant's going to that group and it's deferring costs that our local troops will then save on the backend?
Correct. So, um, the, the troops in, um, local, from our local area have the resources. So, right now, if they were to plan an outing, in which they will be planning an outing soon, they need to provide a liability of up to a million dollars to secure any campsites. And that is at no cost to them because we provide those. And that's the beauty of having that, that ability to, to, um, to have, operate as a larger council, that we don't put it on their backs or on the, on the church, on the local charters as well.
So, let me, I have a question for the local scouts. Leader, right? You're the leader of the?
Uh, yes, I'm an Assistant Scout Master.
Okay, so, just a, a simple question, uh, if we approve this grant, you'll see that money coming to your local troop, correct?
Yes.
Not correct?
Yeah, no, that's correct.
Okay, so you will see it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is, uh, how would you see it, I mean, so?
So, it's not, it's not as explicit, so let, as a, so as a counter example, you know, many of you probably have been to the Pancake Breakfast, which was just recent. Fourth of July, you may have bought pizza from the Boy Scouts or lemonade from the Cub Scouts. So, we have troop-level fundraisers, I mean, from those, we have troop-level fundraisers that fund our initiatives at, sort of at the local level. But behind the scenes, so like Manuel was describing, the insurance that covers our outings that we may not even think about, because we just go, we plan the outing, we go on the outing, and we don't realize that what's, what's protecting the outing is this massive insurance policy that we would, could never even begin to purchase. It's, it's the behind the scenes, you know, the, like Manuel was saying, the, um, youth protection training, the, the background checks, et cetera, the things that, uh, essentially protect the, the whole organization around the outings and that sort of thing, that the council level is taking care of. So, will I realize it? If I think about it, I would, sure. I mean, I'm, I'm more focused in the details of, you know, arranging the campouts and so forth. But, yeah, absolutely, at the local level, Pancake Breakfast, selling pizza, that funds basics, you know, like, like the details of the campout. But the infrastructure that makes all that feasible, right, is something that if the, the council has to participate in. So, yeah, I think, I think we would gain, we would be.
I make a motion, we approve this grant.
I have a motion to approve this $3,000 grant?
I second it.
And I have a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Well, actually, we'll do a roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Loufer? Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you for coming back, Mr. Cora, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, the next item is the Hauser Junior High Cougar Advance Program, and we have a speaker to address that. Mr. Motto?
Hi, my name is Matt Muto.
Muto.
I'm an eighth grade teacher at Hauser Junior High here in Riverside. I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to come back and discuss a little bit about our eighth grade field trip, Cougar Advance. Um, I've been teaching at Hauser for eight years and every year that I've been there, I've had an opportunity to go on this trip. I believe it started a couple of years before I was there, so it's been going on for about 10 years or so. Um, and this is a trip where we take students to Martinsville, Indiana, um, which is like a southwestern suburb of Indianapolis. Um, there are all sorts of, it's, it's affiliated with Indiana University. Um, and a couple, some of the goals that we are trying to work on, um, when we go to this particular field trip, um, is, is twofold. Number one, we are trying to help build leadership skills and teamwork skills. Um, the types of things that they have an opportunity to work on when they're there, high ropes courses, um, where they're climbing, I, I think I might have sent you guys a few pictures and, uh, that you had a chance to look through. And they're, you know, they're able to set goals and climb and try to reach those goals. They're also able to support their fellow students with belay devices where they're actually making sure that everybody's safe. Um, different team working skills that we work on, they have, um, one of my favorites to watch is raft building, where they actually give the students like, four 50-gallon drums, plastic drums, some two-by-fours, some rope, and they say, build a raft. Um, and so the students are sitting there building a raft. Sometimes they build it too far away from the water and then realize how difficult it is to carry that thing all the way to the water. Uh, but once they get it there, they need to see if they can make it float. If it floats, then one person hops on, more people hop on, they try to get everybody on their team on. What's really interesting for me as a, as a, as a teacher, when I'm watching these leadership skills and these team building skills, is I, you know, it's, it's, it's great to see the students outside of the classroom setting and seeing different students excel and, and take leadership roles and other students kind of sit back and, but, but really watching them work together is pretty interesting. There's another aspect of it as well, where we really try to focus on the dangers of drugs and alcohol and peer pressure and violence. Um, we have speakers that come in from, uh, the Indianapolis DEA office, um, and recovering addicts from re, nearby rehabilitation centers that come and talk to our students about the dangers of drugs and alcohol. The idea is when we're, when we're, when we're there, we want students to realize that there is, you know, negative peer pressure, obviously, and the dangers of drugs and alcohol as they continue on into high school and then on, and even beyond that. But also understand that there's positive peer pressure, and in order for you to achieve things, you need to have positive support systems in place, friends that are going to be there, that are going to support you as you're trying to climb up this thing or try out for a basketball team or get involved with Boy Scouts or whatever it may be at the next level. So, um, I've had an opportunity to coordinate this particular trip, and I believe this is my fourth year doing so. Um, and when the book was passed to me on, on how to kind of, um, help our students get there, and because the cost of the trip is $299, um, one of the things that was provided to me was, okay, you gotta send letters out to local businesses, ask for donations, and another thing that was on there was applying for this particular grant. And we have been very fortunate to receive that in previous years. And, um, so that is again why I filled out this particular application, because this really does help a lot of our students. If our students are, or, and their families require financial assistance and they reach out to me and, and, uh, through grants like yours and then also through donations from community members and, and businesses in the Riverside area, we want to make sure that if they want to go but they can't for financial reasons, then we can make that possible for them.
So, this grant would directly help five students to go?
Uh, it, so it varies. Um, it varies every year. Typically, we start, well, first, the number of, of families that ask for financial assistance varies. So, typically, the way we'll start it is we'll, we'll offer a 50% scholarship if they ask, and if that is doable for the family, then fantastic. Um, if they, if that's really like, totally not possible, then sometimes we'll offer 100%.
So, then this grant would enable somewhere between five and 10 students?
Correct.
To go, and would those students be from Riverside Township?
Correct.
Yeah, um, thank you for providing more information, too. Along those same lines, I noticed that in your information, your further information, you said 10 to 15 families, but you just clarified that because you're only asking for half the amount that would equal 10 to 15 families if you would supply the full, uh, amount and pay for the kids to go. So, then you would be getting the rest of the money from local businesses and stuff like that?
That's correct, yeah. I think when I gave that number, I was thinking like, just overall, that's usually around how many families end up asking.
About 10?
It, yeah, it varies. Yeah, 10 to 15, I think, is typical over the last few years total.
How many total go?
Um, so, it's built up steam over the years, you know? Like, I think that when I project my numbers to the Bradford Woods staff, I, we try to say that 75% of our students are going to go, though we've had in recent years upwards of almost 90%.
And how many? Do you have about 200?
Correct.
Eighth graders?
Eighth grade, yeah. This year, right now, we have just over 200 eighth graders. We've, we've had, last year was our largest class and I think there was like, to, total 235 eighth graders or something like that, and we had a large number of students that went last year.
I make a motion, we grant $1,500 to the Hauser Cougar Group.
I second it.
I have a motion and a second to grant the $1,500 requested amount to the Cougar Advance Program of Hauser. Any discussion? Further questions? Then please call for the vote.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Loufer?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming back.
And is there anyone here from the American Cancer Society? That grant was also deferred. I had a phone conversation and I really expected someone to be here tonight, um, but they did confirm, I know that the question was, does that mean we would, this would be in the form of a sponsorship, a $1,000 sponsorship? And yes, that would be the, um, that would be the result here.
So, it's for the Relay for Life?
Correct. And the Relay for Life raises funds so that they can provide services and those services are utilized and they are free to people, um, requesting them and they're, they are used within this township.
And that would be a silver sponsorship, if I'm not mistaken, for the $1,000?
Correct, correct.
For the event on June 9th?
Which is the event of West Cook. That has moved around over the years, but that's, uh, that's held at, um, Lyons Township High School. Um, they've consolidated some of those events to, you know, make them work better together.
All right, I make a motion that we grant $1,000 to the American Cancer Society for a silver sponsorship for Relay for Life.
I have a motion to sponsor the, a silver sponsorship for the American Cancer Society Relay for Life at June 9th.
I'll second it.
And I have a second. Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none, please call for the vote.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Loufer?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. I see that we have some other guests here tonight and we do try to move things up in the agenda. Is there any objection? I think we have quite a few people here regarding item E. Could we move to?
Do we need a motion for that or?
I would, I would like a motion to amend the agenda at this point.
I make a motion, we amend the agenda, going to E for possibility of additional exercise class on Fridays.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to amend the agenda to move to item E now. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, so, we have had a request from those who've come to the Monday and Wednesday classes, and it is in your packets. We received it previously as correspondence and we put it on this month's agenda. So, would you, would you like to, uh, step up and speak to it? This is Jerry Owen, the leader of the classes.
I'm Jerry Owen, thanks.
And his fan club.
I'm at 153 Berry Point, uh, in Riverside. So, I am currently, I'm in the, I think I just celebrated the second year of working with, uh, senior citizens of Riverside in exercise and fitness, um, every Monday and Wednesday at noon. And I'm asking for, uh, that, for that to be extended to Fridays at noon to add a class. Um, reason being is, all of 2000, the statistics of 2017 is we never had less than five in a class for the entire, that's rain, snow, sleet, holidays, day before holidays, day after holidays. Um, we've had, it, we've had, 17 is the, is the highest we've had. And we've averaged between, I would say 11 and 14 is the average that we've had in pretty much every single class. Now, this is all word of mouth, there's been no advertising on my end, um, and mainly because... Now, this is all word of mouth. There's been no advertising on my end and mainly because I want this class to be safe. I feel more than twenty in a class, I'm going to need additional help. And I think that we can, if we add the class at noon on Thursdays, I can still average that eleven to fourteen. So I, Friday, sorry, Fridays. So I know that there are many people that can only make Wednesday. There are many people that can only make Monday. There's people that come to both. I know that there would be people that would add an additional one if they had the option, and I know that there's others that would come to all three. So, um, I think it's something very beneficial. I've, I've worked with this, this age group for close to nineteen years as a exercise trainer and also as a physical therapist. And so, um, the, the benefits of this are not only just exercise, but the fact that I can, you know, have this many people come out, um, no matter what the weather conditions are, um, and even some of them showing up tonight in support. And so, um, so I think this, this encompasses a lot of things, social, health, um, and it's a great thing for the, for the township. So, so I'm asking for Fridays at noon to be added.
Just as additional information, we started, a couple of weeks ago, we started with a sign in sheet so that we know who's here and how many are at any class. And since we started that, I've got the record of four classes and we had eight, fourteen, nine, and eleven. So, in there, yeah.
I think the senior exercise class is one of the best programs that we run, you know, because it does bring in residents of Riverside Township. And it's always, you know, good to work on your balance and your strength. Or I was just at the Lyons Club Dinner and, um, talking to the other people at my table about this and they're like, oh yeah, we, we'll come, you know? So I got two more to come just by talking about it at a dinner that I was at.
I can add something to that too because I have, I told my mom and dad about it. Actually, Mary Robb sent them a little blurb. And I also told my neighbor, they're going, and they, they like it.
Everybody likes it.
Well, sure. And here's the thing, that's, that's three more people that are going at least twice a week.
And Tim's mom and dad are here tonight, so.
But I will say this, you know, my dad had a checkup today. He doesn't know I know this, but he had a checkup today. And all his vital statistics were improved. And the doctor asked him, why are they improved? What have you been doing differently? He says, I'm exercising. And she goes, that's the key. So, how much is this going, more is this going to cost? Do we have a cost on this?
Well, it's, it's, uh, under, it's six hundred dollars more a month.
Okay.
Than what we're paying.
So that's going to be an extra seventy-two hundred dollars a year, am I right?
You're the accountant too.
Don't, don't hold that against me.
Six hundred times twelve, that would be, I mean, that's an average someone's, yeah, extra.
Yeah, so, um, six hundred.
But the problem I see.
You're right, seventy-two hundred.
Here's the thing, this is going to get, catch on fire. Cause I know my neighbor, she's already told people.
And she stopped in to say that she was going despite being your neighbor.
And I know my mom and dad are going to tell people. And you're saying that if he gets over twenty, that you've got to hire somebody else, which is an additional cost. Am I correct? So, do we limit it to twenty? No, we can't do that. Do we say, okay, well, that's going to be another six hundred dollars? And pretty soon we're at twenty thousand dollars instead of what we're supposed to be at. I still think it's worth, I really do. I still think, like Mary, uh, trustee Clark says, it's one of the programs in this township that the seniors enjoy. And they also enjoy the band that trustee Clark has brought in or the speakers. And it gives them something to do. And if this thing takes off and we get fifty seniors working upstairs in that township hall, I think it's well worth it. We are an older community. I know that the costs are, are going to be, may, it could be rather large, but it's something for the seniors and it's a program that we can really build on. And that's my opinion.
Supervisor Wilt, can we hear from some other audience members?
Please, who'd like to step up and, and speak to it?
No, I don't want to step up. Just kind of, you know, bottom line, it's worth it. But if we get twenty-five, we don't need any more, you know? If it could more come by, it fluctuates every week, it's different. But it just goes right into the class, no problems. And that's what I like. You know, it's no big, um, circumstance, you gotta do this, you gotta do that. None of this. Just do it.
We'll say too, Jerry is very good about modifying things. If somebody has a knee problem or a hip problem or a shoulder problem, he can easily modify an exercise for that person.
Right.
So even though it's a group setting, he does give a lot of personal, uh, instruction or modifications.
And in terms of advertising, we are planning to put out another newsletter in the near, very near future. And the draft of it has a couple of paragraphs and people can join us.
Can I say a couple of things?
Sure.
So I, as far as hiring someone else, I, so I, I would, I think the, the pattern for me, and I'm, you know, willing to come back here and, and ask for more days and, um, but it, it would be, you know, to max out what I'm currently doing, hopefully get to Friday and max that out and then add, uh, possibly, you know, come back here and request for Tuesdays and Thursdays and teach it myself. And then I, you know, I have some trainers that work for me that aren't, aren't as, uh, don't have the, you know, twenty-four years in the industry that I have, but that are very, very good. And so I, I can continuously, on the financial end, um, you know, work something out to make sure that, uh, you know, everyone here is taken care of. And I, it, you know, I, I'd be lying if I said I didn't do this for, you know, the profit. And if I, you know, I'm in this industry because I enjoy it, I'm in this industry because, um, you can make a substantial living doing it. The reason I do this and the reason why I work with this population is my, my, my mother passed away two months ago, seventy-five, and did not take care of herself. No matter how hard I tried. Um, my father does pretty well, he's seventy-seven. I was seventeen years old when my last grandparent died and, uh, one I didn't know, and all of them passed away from smoking related diseases. And I never, so I never got the chance to see them this active and I never got to see, you know, um, and, you know, and seeing my, and my dad's actually going to come here for, um, a month, I think, and I'm hoping that I can get him moving and, uh, he's in Florida. So I'm hoping I can get him exercising and have him around a lot longer. So it's very rewarding. And it's the same, if I'm working with, I, I work with professional athletes and I have my whole career. And it's just as rewarding to see a twenty-five-year-old Olympic sprinter that I work with. It's just as rewarding working with someone in their seventies and their eighties and to see them come out for this class. And it's, you know, four degrees outside. So, um, anyway, but thanks for letting me talk, I appreciate it.
What's unique about this program is that seniors can do it. So often you sign up for a senior program, that's an exercise program, and the one who gets the best workout is the instructor. They do not key it towards your, the different abilities. And the way this is run, you work at your own speed. It's, it's timed. You can do five in about a one minute or you can do fifteen in one time. And everything is keyed toward the senior who's not quite as nimble as fifty-year-olds.
Do we have coffee breaks? No water.
So the one concern I have is the cost that we're running into and it is getting to be multiple tens of thousands of dollars. And I would be cautious that we're buying exercise programs for the same eight to ten people. If you look at the cost per unit, if it is the same eight to ten people, we're spending two to three thousand dollars per resident. So I would, um, think that at that cost per unit, we might want to see what else we could do. That being said, I would like to see us try to maximize the attendance. If we had twenty people three times a week, that'd be great. I understand the concept of needing that third day for a real good exercise program. Two times a week is fine, but a third is much better. So I would like to see if, and if we approve this grant, that our job, our focus would be to maximize the attendance and start getting those twenty people. If we're paying for twenty spots, I'd really like to see twenty people have a sign up sheet, cut it at twenty. And once we get a waitlist, then we add that Tuesday, Thursday. So, um, I'm all for it. I just want to make sure that we get more people to those classes.
So I'd like to clarify, it's not a sign up sheet, but a sign in sheet, so we know who does come, when they come. And because there have only been four since we've started doing that, we haven't analyzed yet, but I figured when we have a, some kind of a significant mass, we'll see how many individuals actually came, so we'll, we'll do that total.
I think word of mouth will bring more people in. I heard from Tim and I've only been to three or four classes and I brought a new person in already. So I think if you do word of mouth and all your seniors are looking for something from either the village, the township, or something, people are out of fixed income. We're paying into the township for this. People are looking for benefits. And it's a wonderful class and I can't say enough about it in the four or five times that I've been here.
So as I said, go ahead, trustee.
I just wanted to clarify something, that this is not a grant. This is budgeted out of town programs.
It's our own program, basically.
Yeah, so it, it, it's not a grant.
Right. So as I said, I'm all for the program. I think it's, it's one of the best things we do. I just think we need to, uh, be aware of that the cost is not inexpensive and that we do have open slots. So it's fill those slots. Wouldn't you rather have twenty at every class and?
Well, sure, no, no. But I don't think, I don't think you could see it as slots though. I think it's,
You know what I mean.
Cause I mean, if you, if you look at the average, um, hour, average hourly rate of a trainer, a physical therapist, what I'm charging is typically per person in, in, in average Midwest. So this is, I'm dealing with twenty people, I'm dealing with five people, ten people, twelve, fourteen people. It's expensive and I, I think that my credentials speak for themselves, but it's also, I think, as far as the amount of people that I am in charge of and I'm working with and I'm making sure that they're getting stronger and they're not getting injured, I think if you look at the price per person, it's actually pretty reasonable. As far as the whole, as a budget of a township, it's pretty expensive if you break it down into, so.
Yeah, so again, I'm not against the program. I just think that we need to maximize.
What is the price per person? You're talking about price per person, what is it?
We don't pay per person.
So.
I didn't mean to get off topic.
This is what I would like to propose. I'd like to propose that we extend, uh, the exercise class on Fridays till the end of the year, to the end of two thousand eighteen. And then in December of two thousand eighteen, we can put it on the agenda and revisit it. And if we've had successful, you know, things, we can continue it. And also with that proposal, I'd like to, um, suggest that we add, uh, we take out an ad in the landmark once a quarter, uh, which would be a hundred and seventy-eight dollars per ad. And that could, you know, help us maybe get a few more people. So if we took out three ads in the remainder of two thousand eighteen, that's a little under six hundred dollars.
We have to write a letter in to thank the money. You know, I have to give the students right, you know, I have to write to a landmark. Can you read the letters to the editor, help you?
Yes, I do.
All right, read mine, it's in tomorrow's.
Okay. There's also too, I think they do sometimes list free events, don't they, in the landmark?
They've gotten away from that.
Schedule of events, but I haven't seen it in there in a while.
Right, they kind of got away from that as a regular feature.
That was my proposal. I mean, that's a proposal and if we kind of always, if we think that's good, I can make it into a motion.
Okay, just one other thing before we go into the motion. Part of this, I think part of your reporting to this board every month, that should be included in there. Keep us updated on this.
Are you looking at me?
Yeah, I'm talking, I'm sorry, trustee Clark, I'm sorry about that. I'm looking at trustee Dropka, but I'm meaning you. Let's say, let's have that in, in, you know, our, you know, trustee reports, how that's going along with the speakers and maybe get some feedback.
And Jerry's been, you know, getting those signatures and bringing them in every, every class, so we will start tracking that as, like I said, as a significant mass.
Jerry, either if I run into him because we're neighbors, he'll tell me, or he texts me how many people are in class.
Yes, Mr. Hollenbach?
I have to say something. I heard that, uh, this is not a grant. I, I'm just wondering, what are the rules, the regulations that prevents it from, uh, not, uh, not applying for the grant? Or can you apply for a grant?
So here's, the, the grants that we talk about are what we grant to nonprofit organizations within the community that serve the community. They're not our programs, we don't run them, somebody else does, but needs support. And logically, as a township, we have the power to support things that are of a certain nature. Educational, uh, physical needs, that kind of senior programs, youth programs, we have the ability, under the state law, to, uh, to, to support those kinds of things, even if we don't do them ourselves. Because we do this in our building, we fully pay for the instructor, um, we provide water for it, we have made this one of our own programs and therefore we don't have to give a grant, we just decide that we're going to run it. And if we make changes like adding a day or changing the time or whatever, that's within our power. And it's actually because it is for.
I can say, or, you know, really around what Tim's talking about, my doctor was amazed.
Congratulations.
That's always good to hear and that's a great testimonial.
Some of the, some of the blood work and so forth, if you get, he's never seen it, they can turn it around so.
So quickly, right, yeah.
So I haven't done a lot of exercise, but what I, I've been going about a month. But what, what I've done apparently is nothing good.
Right.
And a lot of people could use it, I tell you.
Yes.
Um, I've been going for about a year and a half now, and I go out in Wednesday. And I really enjoy it, uh, I'm there almost all the time. But I get a lot of which says, anyway, I ride my bike back and forth from over there. But all year long, it's been a little tough this winter. Anyway, I think it's a great program and I think we should really support it and it's good.
The other thing I have to say is that, yes, it's been, just by word of mouth, it has been building. But this board has, has made a commitment. I think when we look at our budget again, we're making a commitment to greater, uh, promotion of our programs, greater visibility of the things that the township provides. Whether we use our newsletter or other media, we're hoping to reach more people with the things that we do. So, uh, very naturally, it will then grow too.
All right, so I make a motion that we extend the exercise class to additional, to Fridays every week till the end of two thousand eighteen. And we'll revisit it in December of two thousand eighteen. And, uh, um, six hundred dollars to. And six hundred dollars to take an ad out in the landmark for the remaining three quarters of the year.
My second.
I have a motion and a second to extend the exercise class to Fridays and re, through the end of 2018, and to revisit at that point to see how that's going, and also to purchase quarterly ads in the landmark for that program. Did I get that right? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Then please call for the vote, because this does involve expenditures.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka?
Yes.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Luthfer?
Yes.
Supervisor Will?
Yes.
Motion, Karen.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Jerry, and thank you all for coming.
Thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you for participating in our program. We really appreciate it.
Congratulations on good...
Yeah.
We may have to add a testimonial to our article about this. Very good. Okay, then back to the agenda, and our next item is analysis of the exterior town hall building needs.
Wait here, we still have one more guest.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I appreciate that, trustee Clark, but I'm here for two items, so I don't mind leaving.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good, then let's continue with our agenda. We had the proposal from Brush Architects, and I believe I shared with you a call that followed up Mr. Waters' visit with us at our last meeting, that there would be a certain amount of interior analysis in terms of how it relates to the exterior, such as whether there's, there's need for any, anything, for example, insulation in the attic and so forth.
Has he changed any of this?
No, this is, this was not, this is the original proposal.
Right.
So it's simply here as unfinished business to see, and this may not be the time that you want to do it, but if we want to analyze what the long-term needs, this would be that assessment of the exterior of the building and what we might expect that we need to do, and kind of a schedule for doing it.
Now, he's moving forward with the Village Riverside stuff?
He's already working with the village, yes. And theirs started because I believe it's the roof that they need to address first on their part of the building.
But they're talking about the flat roof, not the...
Right, correct. It's the flat roof. It's, it's the addition on the, what is it, the west side of the building. And then they also, of course, are studying the, the mortar color and all of that, and the needs for that. But I think that that's actually going to be their phase two. The roof is a more important thing for them at this point. So I mean, we could have a little time. The only difference is if, if the company gets into the analysis of the exterior stonework and mortar for the village, then obviously, they wouldn't want to bring out equipment twice if they're going to be doing, needing some cranes and such to view upper parts of the building and so forth, so.
I don't see that cost savings itemized. Normally, if you're, if you're offering a cost savings for two clients, you would itemize that. So I'm not sure if it's an economic incentive for us to rush into this with this group, because I'm not seeing a cost benefit for it. I understand that when the work gets performed, that might show up, but for these guys, I'm not seeing that.
And, you know, he did call to see if you should come to this meeting as well. I didn't think that there was a need. I think everybody asked him the questions they needed to the last time. But if you want him at a future meeting, we can certainly do that.
Is there, I mean, this is one estimate.
Right.
And I mean, just because the village is using it, doesn't mean that we have to. I have to agree with trustee Luthfer on this. I mean, there's no separation. You know, they're telling us it's going to cost us twenty thousand dollars to look at the room, or look at the building. How much is it, you know, going to cost the village? I'm not really certain if that's going to be in our best benefit.
Very well, and if you want me to get some other, reach out and try to find some other organizations that do this kind of work, if it's something you think we need to do at this time, that's fine. Otherwise, we can just...
Sooner or later, we're going to have to do it.
Right.
I mean, sooner or later, you know, we've got the roof, you know, which, you know, I don't know how, how many years old it is. Sooner or later, we have to do it, but I would like to compare, you know, a couple of quotes out there before, you know, we rush into anything. Especially, especially with the, the amount of money that it's going to cost, and that doesn't include any work. That's just looking at it. And the work itself is going to be a stunner too, so.
And I, I would prefer for this kind of thing to budget it, to talk about it, put it in the budget discussion, put it in the budget, and then move forward on it. Having something sprung on us at the back end of the village process and says, here, spend twenty grand, I'm not comfortable doing it that way. Obviously, like trustee Hallenbach said, we will have to do this, but I think we should do it deliberately.
Okay. Very well, then no action at this time, and we can move on to the next item. And that is the discussion of the budget. Since our special meeting on the twenty-second, I think I notified all of you that I realized, oops, I completely missed putting in a line item for redevelopment of, or development of a new website. So I added that item. It is on the second page. It is item sixteen twenty-three. It was an unused number, and it seemed to fit in there among the, the other programs and analyses and so forth. So I, and I picked this number not quite out of the air, but through a little bit of guesstimation through some people who do provide that kind of service. And I was told it could be anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five, depending on how you want to go. And so that's, that's where I went the mid-range. And otherwise, this is exactly what we discussed in our special meeting. And the next step then, if we, if you want to put this forth, this is the proposal. We would make this available for public inspection. And then typically, what we do is we reserve about a half hour before the annual meeting in April. We open it up to a hearing on the matter, and if anyone has any questions or objections, they can come forth at that time. And then after the annual meeting, at that regular town board meeting, we then vote on the budget.
I make the motion that we adopt this draft budget for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
I have a motion by trustee Dropka to put forth this version of the budget for...
My second.
Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and I have a second by trustee Hallenbach. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam clerk, would you call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka?
Yes.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Luthfer?
Yes.
Supervisor Will?
Yes.
Motion, Karen.
All right, onward.
Just a quick question. Is that, you said thirty minutes before the town meeting, so does that mean that we're going to start at five thirty?
Five thirty would be that hearing, yeah.
Okay, so we'll start at five thirty then, that day?
Yes. We can't start the town meeting before six, but there's six oh one, but there's no objection. There's no problem with starting.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes. So plan all your other activities for the April meeting around that, that we have to be an hour and a half earlier.
Could you send a reminder out for the chronologically advanced members?
Nobody's as chronologically advanced here.
Okay, that's true, that's true. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Very well. Anything else on that?
No.
Then on to item D, discussion of town hall building usage policy. This is, again, you see, it's fully marked draft. It's open for any of your commentary. We, I wanted to bring it up now so that we would be ready. So there's, there were some budget notes based on this. I, the numbers that I came up with just seemed to be something reasonable. I tried to make it not prohibitive. You're welcome to change any of those rental costs. I just wanted to make sure that if we needed to have a custodian come in, even for a short time, to open and close and things like that, that that was covered, and that if, that there would be, you know, some, something. And yet, if it was during the regular hours, we're not going to gouge people. We're going to continue the same kinds of policies. Only thing you might note, I, somewhere in there, I did put in that we reserved the right to waive fees if we saw that was suitable. For example, there is one event that I can think of that happens in this town hall and has been happening for many, many years. It's coming up very soon, one of our bigger organizations in the community that has a chicken dinner, and they are not charged. However, I will note that traditionally, the supervisor has been a member of that organization, and therefore acts as kind of a liaison through all of that, even in their planning meetings and so forth, so. But I wanted to be able to not have them frightened that, oh my. I wouldn't waive things that if they decided to suddenly serve beer at their dinner, I certainly wouldn't waive that, but perhaps the rental.
So I had a, I had a couple suggestions, and this goes back to the packet of information that you provided me that when you had printed out a bunch of townships that, I think it was back in September, you had, and I had kept all these papers and stuff. So I particularly like, first of all, when we're talking about the cost, to be perfectly honest with you, I think that these prices and the schedule of fees are a bit low. And I would like to see them more in line with the packet of information that you had printed out regarding McHenry Township rental fees. I really liked that breakdown. I got the page right here. We can make a copy after, unless you have it on the computer. But I really liked the cause. I, you know, I haven't seen the hall, right? But I'm looking primarily at the capacity, and the occupancy of that township hall and their rooms seem to be in line with all of our rooms that we have here. And so therefore, I, I would, that's why I kind of like those costs, and I, I find them more in line with what we're going for. I also, on, on the same token with this McHenry Township hall, I like the resident price and the non-resident price, and then the resident fee with alcohol and the non-resident fee with alcohol. I, I really like that layout that they have going too.
Now, I will tell you that since this was, this is a new program, I wasn't anticipating non-residents' individual rentals at this point. We're not really in the catering hall business, so I, I consciously did not include non-residents. But certainly, if this board prefers to offer that, I was thinking more in terms of at least someone who's requesting it should be the resident, kind of like the country club would require that. So I mean, I, I always, I want to, you know, it's, it's the building that the township residents own, so I wanted to give priority there.
That makes sense, then, I, because I must have missed it then in the draft about not having non-residents use the hall.
Well, it doesn't, I just don't provide for non-residents. Everywhere, I'm, you know, and we, I can certainly clarify that.
I think, I think it should be clarified, and then maybe we can revisit it, you know, in a year or two from now to, you know, see if we have an influx of non-residents wanting to use the hall, and then we're saying no, and we're pointing it to the policy that says, no, we can't accept you because we have this policy that says we cannot give you the hall to non-residents.
Yeah, I'd like to revisit that, the resident, non-resident. I understand giving the residents...
And we can change that now. I just thought, you know, as a pilot program, sort of?
Yeah, no, I, I think it's fine, but I think we, if, if that's, let's, let's put it in the policy then to say that we aren't, at this time, or something like this, it's not open to rentals by non-residents.
Right.
But I also agree, if we do open up to non-residents, that there should be a tiered fee structure, obviously, the non-residents. I think you'd be surprised, there is such a demand for space that, once word does get out, you'll have weddings coming from Bourbon, you'll have trade associations looking for them. So if we are looking forward to help offset some of our maintenance costs and that kind of thing, I think it would be smart to at least entertain specific, narrow-focused outside groups.
I, I have to say that I'm really, really skeptical about non-resident Riverside Township residents having access to us in the beginning. You know, this is a new adventure for us, a new venture, I should say.
Because why not limit it to a town, to township residents?
Right, yeah. And just put it in the policy that says, you know, residents only, and then we can revisit it.
We can revisit it, yeah, at different times.
Yeah.
Okay.
The other thing too is the rent, or is it going to be first come, first served, whether you're a nonprofit and you don't pay, or a forepay person?
Yeah, I simply stated that priority would be given to township-based programs. So first it's us, then nonprofit township-based organizations, personal other uses will be granted on as-available basis, so.
That is a tough one, though, because if you say, sure, you can have it, you can't go back three weeks later and say, sorry.
Oh, no, no, no. I intend first come, first served on that, you know. But if we had two people approach us for the same date because it's a really popular date for something, let's say. Let's say somebody wanted to have a, let's say it's a, I don't know, summer solstice party, you know, and whatever. I mean, and if an individual and a nonprofit, or we decided, hey, we should throw a summer solstice party, then that would be the priority order.
I, I also liked Onal Fallon Township's rental agreement. It lists the reservations and hours of operation, and it said that the township hall will be available for rental during the following times. Monday, block X to X, Tuesday, X to X, you know, Wednesday, X to X. I like that breakdown, so it's right there, crisp and clear, that, you know, those are our hours of operation for rentals. Also, along the lines of Onal Fallon Township, and I know I said this before, it says in there that the building may be used for a funeral luncheon for a deceased resident of Onal Fallon Township for a flat fee of X. I think that that's very appropriate. I would love to see something in there like that, a very low-cost fee. If you're a township resident and would like to have a funeral luncheon here, you know, that, that, you can throw all these prices right out the window, and this is the flat fee. You know what I mean?
Right. My only concern with funeral luncheons is the timing. Obviously, that's a very short notice. And so it's going to be on a, if available, basis.
And parking.
Well, and that's it. During the day, parking is an even bigger issue. When the bank's open, the Villa Hall is open, and so forth, I'm a little, you know, we've talked about the parking is going to be an issue anyway.
Well, we can review this and get back to supervisor will with our, with our recommendations and so on. I mean, this is just a draft.
Right. But I would like to publish it, and actually, you may have noticed, again, I'm going to reference something that's coming up later, but the newsletter, there's a box on the addressing page that's intended for revealing, the reveal of what we're going to be doing. So I want to make sure that, you know, we can refer them to the, the website, and on the website, we would have this. So I, now, on... So I, now on the fees, you liked the fees for McHenry?
Yes.
And can you just give me a ballpark? So, and by the way, I re, I really think that room 30, we're at, we have asked the fire department to come and relook at all the rooms. We don't expect most of them to have changed, but that one doesn't make sense to us because it's a bigger room than this room and 22, and yet it shows the same capacity. So I don't know if it's because they're concerned on the third floor, whether there's something about the floor or whatever, but I just, we are going to have them revisit that.
So did you, did you, you said you wanted what from me?
Um, I was looking for, and I, because I don't have that handy, but what were some of the differences in prices that you liked in theirs on a similar room?
So the, the one room with the occupancy of 80 people, so that would maybe go in line with, you know, the, the first floor being at 46 or 30 with the 60 or something like that. The resident fee is a $200 rental and, and then a 100 deposit. I also noticed that on all these, there's a deposit on all of them. Some of them that you have listed are, there's no deposit or to be determined. And then the, the, the one that I really liked with the, the township hall, the, the, the main room where it's got occupancy of 200, where ours is, you know,
The auditorium.
somewhere between 150 and 300, right? So it's in line with that. Resident fee is a $400 rental. Resident fee with alcohol would be $700. And then you have the non-resident fee, non-resident fee with alcohol. And then there's a nonprofit weekend rate. So, and that would be 150.
Well, if it's a nonprofit, we generally don't charge.
Well, if they're going to be serving alcohol, though.
Oh, if they're charging.
Yeah.
Or if they're charging an admission. We've been, up until now, it's been the, it had to be a free event.
So, I mean, I, I think, to me, I, you know, that's, that's more in line with the whole thing because to me, I'm, you know, nonprofit weekend fee, 100, so if, if, you know, the, the local, the local dance group wants to hold an event and it's nonprofit, then, you know, that's $100, 150 with the alcohol. But let's say, you know, you know, Tim wants to throw a birthday bash or something like that, that's a resident fee with alcohol. So that's, that's, that'll be like $700, you know what I mean? I just thought it would be more in line, you know.
Do, and I, it's been a while since I looked specifically at one over another. I'm wondering if they have full staff on duty or something like that going on for, 700 seems like a really high rate. And for a community fundraiser, if they're paying 700 to rent the hall, they might as well not happy with it.
Well, no, I mean, the nonprofit, if it's a community fundraiser, then it would be the nonprofit weekend rate.
Okay, so you're talking for a private party, they're going to pay 700 just for the room?
Well, with the, I, I just thought that it's a starting point because you're going to have to factor in the security and you're going to have to factor in the cleaning.
Well, if we insist on security, they have to pay for that. We would, we would require them to provide the security, but we would not negotiate that for them. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just concerned, I look at the organizations that I know in the area and, you know, a $700 rental, nobody's going to pay.
Right, no, that's.
Especially without guarantee.
That's the nonprofits though, the nonprofits would be at a different rate than.
I understand, so an individual, what is it here? I mean, we should be providing valet parking if they're going to pay 700 for the auditorium.
So why don't we?
I, I'm sorry, it's, it's a beautiful room, but 700 just to walk in the door with your family without, without talking about the food and what that's going to cost you?
Well, I'm just talking about a wedding. Let's look at comparable prices though, you know, I mean, let's go to a banquet hall to have your wedding, you're going to be upwards of, you know, $5,000 or something.
If you're at a banquet hall, you're generally not paying a fee for the space because you're getting all the food and alcohol there, and that's what they're making their money on. If you're at a place like Canton Tigny or Dunan, I think you do pay, you know, for, you know, between 700 and 1,500 for the space, just to use the space. But I think this space, 700 is a lot of money.
So can we, I mean, we're, we're, we're not discussing the, the actual draft of the ordinance. At this point, we're talking about the fees. So can we go ahead and, do we need to, do you need us to approve the ordinance at this point? And then discuss the fees? Or do we come back with a revised fee structure?
Well, I think that if we pass an ordinance, it should have an accompanying
Yes.
schedule of fees. So I don't, it doesn't sound like we're ready to pass it if I still need to come up with other numbers.
And look, I'm not, I'm not saying that a $700 is a hard thing. I'm just saying that I think that the prices that we have here currently in the draft, I think are, are going to be low.
They, they are low, and I will fully admit that. I wanted a starting point and I fully expected some, you know, some adjustments to that.
I think, I think, for example, a community group with, with charging admission, serving food with alcohol, the, the price that you have, I think that that's probably, that's probably okay. Maybe, maybe a little bit lower, but I think that that's probably okay. And, but, you know, I'm, I'm just looking at individuals, you know, not necessarily, you know.
So resident, individual, private event with food but no alcohol?
I'd see, and I, I would, I would, that's right, exactly. So the resident, individual, private event with food and alcohol is less than the community group with alcohol. And I think that it should be, the resident should be a little bit higher.
See, and I looked at it, my reasoning on it was, the resident is not charging admission.
No.
The community group who's providing the same things is charging admission. So they can build that into their price, whereas the resident has no ticket price to build it into.
So is there a deadline that we're facing?
Well, no, I mean, I had hoped that we would roll it out with the new budget as of the beginning of April.
So why don't we table this for now, go back, talk, do some revisions to the fee structure?
Okay.
And then, I mean, that seems to be the only thing we have left to really.
And approve it at the next meeting and it'll be just a couple weeks.
Or we can have a special meeting to, to look it over and, and look it over and then hash this all out.
I don't think it needs a special meeting.
Well, I mean, if we're going to be discussing fee schedules and everything else, I think we should have that set before we come out with an ordinance. Everything's set in line. And if we're going to go through a, a meeting and say, well, this is it, and then we have to change things around, that's just the way I feel about it anyway.
I also think that there's a, what's the, what's the hour? So, so how many hours do I get as a resident, individual, host, private event with food and alcohol? How many hours do I get to use the hall for? And if, you know, and, and if we're going to be discussing that, you know, that's why I like the McHenry Township thing because then you can look at Old Fallon Township and they have it broken down at a set amount per hour. So do you want to do it per hour, it's a flat fee? Or is it going to be this fee for one to six hours? And if it's six and above hours, then you're going to pay a different fee, you know?
Well, generally, if it's a flat fee from one to six hours, then it would be a, a flat fee for each additional hour. So it'd be, you know, like $100 from midnight to 1:00 AM, you know, then $100 from 1:00 AM to 2:00.
Sure.
So it'd be, that would be generally how that works.
Yeah.
Which again is something, again, I mean, I know that's just an example, but I wouldn't want to go past midnight here just because of neighbors.
That's what, midnight, I agree with you, I think they should.
But if they think they want to be able to come in and do other stuff and they want to go from 4:00 to 10:00 for six hours and then pay extra to go to 12, that's, yeah.
And then the other thing we're going to have to deal with is setup too. You know, if, you know, that they need to include setup time. But frequently, you know, in events like this, if there's nobody in there in the morning or the afternoon, they like to come in in the morning and set up and then come back. So we're going to have to deal with that too.
Right.
Or even the day before.
Say something like, if the hall is available, you know, the day before, you can come in here like for a Saturday event. You know, we could put in the policy something that if the hall is available on Friday, you can come in anytime past noon on Friday.
At 1:00, we have exercise classes.
Okay, yeah, 1:00, okay. So, well, you don't want to do that, so you say 2:00, right? 2:00.
Between 2:00 and 5:00, let's say.
Exactly, right, right, to set up, right. But I think that that needs to be put in the policy too because you're going to get all the question.
That's why I brought it to you.
And set up our decorations, you know, so, right?
Okay, I will work on all that. And what is your pleasure, you want to just do it? Did you have something to add?
Yeah, do you mind if I add something?
No, no.
No, no, no.
That's why they're open meetings.
Hello, everyone, I'm Allison Scanlon, and I'm here as a resident of Riverside and therefore interested in this topic, as well as a member of the Riverside Junior Women's Charity. So just a few general comments on things you've been talking about. One is, I just wanted to ensure you had a copy of the application to use the Riverside train station and the Riverside library because a lot of the items that you've been talking about is part of their standard forms, like what hours it's available and setup and all of that. And so those might be helpful in finalizing your draft policy. And in terms of setup, we've been very thankful to the township when they've allowed us to have our Santa event here. And when, exactly to your point, Commissioner, when the township hall is available the day before, we are allowed to come in and do our setup the day before. And it's the same when we request an event at the train station, for example. If it's available, we're allowed to do our setup the day before or that morning and then come back.
And there's no extra charge for that, correct? There's no extra charge for that?
For the setup time, no, there is not.
Right.
And they, you know, in, in terms of your, your discussions about charging for nonprofits and such, I will say that for the Riverside Juniors, we do charge for our events because our aim is to maximize the amount of money that we can give back to people in our area who are in need. And I will say that, you know, if there is a charge, we, we might be priced out of, of the township hall. I will just say that quite bluntly. And although the village and the library have charges for their rentals and going through the process and such, it is a discretion of the board or the, the village staff in the case of using village properties, that they can waive some of those fees. So I'd ask you to seriously consider if that's a possibility, that potentially even if, according to your schedule of fees, there's a charge for nonprofits, if you would consider a case-by-case basis for nonprofits of not charging them. Because, you know, I will say that our, our goal is to maximize money and if we have a choice of going somewhere that doesn't charge money versus if they do charge money, we potentially would go where they aren't going to charge money. And then also, just as a side comment, back to what you were discussing about rental fees for if you go to a place that has food or not, exactly what you were saying, Commissioner Robb, is that, you know, when you go to like a, a restaurant, they're providing all the food and drink and therefore it is thousands of dollars potentially you're paying. And if you pay for the rental here, if I was coming as a private citizen to hold a party upstairs, yes, I, you know, I'm bringing in all my food and such, but depending upon the rental fee, because now I'm doing all of the work to throw the party and I don't have the waitstaff or the cookstaff or the cleanup staff, me and my family potentially are doing all of that work, we might be less inclined to pay a lot just for the, just for the venue itself. Because we're paying for the, the food somewhere else, but then we're also taking on all of that work. So I'm not saying that to you to change your mind about what the fees should be for private people coming in to rent, but just like that concept of, yeah, you could go to a restaurant and you're paying more, but they're also doing all the work for you, whereas coming here. So that's just a, a comment in terms of evaluating what the cost would be. And I think those were my things, unless you had any questions for me in terms of using spaces in the past in the village.
Are you here to ask for a date or to hold an event?
No. But thank you for asking. Um, you know, and maybe it would be helpful if the policy, once it gets to a suitable stage where you're willing to share it, maybe you could share it with some of the organizations in town, like the Lions or the Juniors or other scouts who might be interested in using the facility. And maybe they could give you comments which you could discuss or, you know, and may or may not.
See what would be prohibited.
Yeah, may or may not inform your decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did notice, for example, that that waiver comment is simply in my scheduled fees. I will also put it in the policy.
I thought I saw it in here.
It's in the scheduled fees, but I don't think it's in the policy.
No, I thought, I thought it was in the policy.
Maybe, maybe I'll reread it, I couldn't find it now when I was looking for it. Yeah, sorry, I know that it's under, in the schedule of fees. It's mentioned in there. Alrighty, I'll get back to the drawing board and.
Yeah, I'd like to say again, it's revisable. I appreciate all the effort and hard work you put into this.
Yes.
It's been a lot of, a lot of background.
It's what I should be doing. I'm, my only problem is that there have been a few little extras that popped up lately that, so I didn't always have the time to give it that I wanted to.
No, I think we're on the right track.
Not now, no.
I think, I think we're on the right track, I think.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
You got to start somewhere.
More stuff closer.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. So we'll probably just put "coming soon" in the newsletter.
Hi, just one other thing, I just was wondering if you had any statistics based on the prior events with alcohol that were held here in the township? And what, you know, how many events there were? And if there were security issues or if there were.
There were.
We, there have been events in this township hall. Yeah, it was about a time.
Probably 10 years ago or so.
I just wasn't sure if there were any, you know, known issues about those and that's why they discontinued it. And I just wasn't sure if there was any information or statistic about those events, which again could further inform the discussion.
I, I wouldn't say that the issues that have been here were specifically with alcohol-based events. There were some, there were some groups that were asked perhaps to not return because they were just a mess. And I really, I don't know that we could speak to, I don't think anybody here was on the board at the time when the prohibition came in. Not, not prohibition, but, you know, the local prohibition. I don't, I do know, I mean, I can recall being at events where alcohol was served, but that's probably more than a dozen years ago.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty. So onward. In terms of the supervisor's report, I will just update you that we, we've had a little bit of an issue lately that we've been nipping in the bud. We've been working with the village. There have been some youth that were hanging out in the building after school. And I, I chased a few out. The village has called the police if they thought that some people were, were acting up in here. And so every now and then, I do stay beyond the, the office hours and just kind of stalk and wait and shoe them out. We also had a mother show up and the village employees spoke with her when they were preparing for a meeting here. And she came to find out where exactly she had found out that kids were hanging out here and wanted to check it out. In the meantime, however, we had taken action to make sure that rooms that were not being used at night are locked. So there wasn't that. And I have to say, when I caught some youngsters in the building, they weren't doing harm, it's just, it's not safe for us to have them hanging out without supervision. There were some youngsters who, some teenagers who were, who had pulled the grand piano away from the wall in the upper hallway and were playing it. I mean, sheet music and all. And the others were just standing around listening, but I had to say. And then after I, those scattered, I did catch some other young men in the, in the stairwell. Heard some rustling there and they were a little rowdier. So we're working on that, just so you know. We were, I was approached by a village. Um, we were, I was approached, uh, by, um, a village planning person, as somebody, uh, an employee, who wondered whether we would be, uh, amenable to putting a vending machine on the second floor. And without consultation with any of you, I said no. Uh, I felt that especially if we start renting the property for other things, that would be a conflict. Um, I would like to compliment, uh, Trustee Clark on the, uh, the senior concert, which brought, there were about twenty people at their last, at the last senior meeting, and they had an Irish group there that apparently they've had before, and that was a well-attended event. Also compliments on the opioid event that was very, uh, very well-received, I think, by all the attendees. And I'm very happy that we did ask Riverside Television to tape it and that it is available.
Yeah.
And, uh, I also want to let you know that there's been a little rush, um, this past week for, um, actually requests for emergency assistance. The process is that first they have to be ineligible for general assistance, so I have to go through the whole process. So, it, it takes a bit of an interview, but, um, North Riverside, um, had put out some final notices on water bills, and, um, their cutoff was yesterday, so suddenly my phone was ringing to help folks out. So, there's, there have been a few things that happened like that. Um, Food Pantry is going about steady as usual. I think that the newsletter has brought out more people for the Nurses Closet, and people are ever so grateful for that. And, um, I'll be glad to answer any other questions you might have, but that's kind of what's going on in my life here. Trustees' reports.
Well, um, it's Tim requesting a seniors' report, but-
I think we got it tonight.
Uh, so we had Switchback, the group Switchback, which is a favorite. They do come every March, uh, and play for the seniors. And, um, hopefully next year, you know, we might be able to do it like at Happy Hour. Have a little beer and wine. Um, for that, um, our April meeting, um, also gonna try to get an opera singer for entertainment. And then in May, um, we're gonna go on a field trip, hopefully to the zoo, and take the tram ride around the zoo and then have some lunch.
Very nice, good.
Very good, thank you.
And I want to thank everybody who helped me with the opiate presentation, because it was a group effort getting all the speakers there.
Yes, thank you to the mental health board and so for co-sponsoring that.
That was a wonderful lunch you guys put in.
Very, very good. Any other trustees have a report? Mental health?
Mental health board. At our last, uh, mental health board meeting, uh, a suggestion that was made by Trustee Drapka that the mental health board buy a full table for fundraisers, and if we didn't have enough, uh, people that could attend that fundraiser, that, uh, the board would give, be given an opportunity to attend. Uh, the mental health board thought that was a great idea, and they have approved that. Um, I know that the Helping Hand fundraiser is April fourteenth at the, uh, Drury Lane. That one, we do have a full table. And the CSS one, which is Community Support Services, is April twentieth at the McDo- at McDonald's Lodge in Oak Brook. There may be some vacancies there. And, uh, we will get ahold of Supervisor Wilt, and she will post that out to members of our board. Mental health board granted a discretionary grant to the Way Back Inn. They are out of Maywood. They are currently serving eight township residents, and they are strictly for addictions. So, any type of addiction services, this place, uh, the Way Back Inn is there. We've vetted them quite extensively, and they were given a discretionary grant. As most of you are aware, the Village of Riverside is pursuing special recreation for the village. I have been, uh, in attendance at the last two meetings, and some on the village board feel that the township should be paying or partnering, part turnering to fund this program. I have been in contact with Supervisor Wilt and our consultant from the mental health board to explore all options regarding special, uh, recreation. It should be noted that we offered to sit down with Supervisor Wilt and myself to find out the scope of what the village is looking for. At the ti- at this time, which has been, uh, three, three and a half weeks, we have not heard anything from the village.
I, I would-
Check that.
Well, I have a little addendum to that. Just today, I was approached by the village manager that President Sells would like to meet sometime next week at my convenience. I don't know your availability, but on Monday at eleven A.M., we will be meeting just to see what's going on.
All right, well, we'll, we'll see if, uh, we'll discuss that.
Okay.
Um, the community needs assessment will be available to the public on April first, two thousand and eighteen. And finally, at our last meeting, Trustee Lupfer was concerned that some of our police officers were getting little training on mental health issues.
I would.
At that time, I told the board I would look into it. At the opioid forum, I talked to Deputy Chief Gutcheck about the training. The Deputy Chief stated that it is a state law that every officer receives training on mental health behavior and related issues. He also stated that Lieutenant Lara has had continued education on children with autism training and has classes for the officers. I have also told the Deputy Chief that if he needed any other training materials or some financial help or training, to let, uh, us or the mental health board know. And that concludes my report.
I'd suggest you're mischaracterizing my concerns, um, but I appreciate your response.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other trustee reports?
Oh, I do have a couple of questions.
Um.
I have a mental health board. The, the grant for the addiction services?
Mm-hmm.
Um-
From the Way Back Inn?
Yeah.
Right.
Um, do some of these larger grants address addiction as well?
Sure. Pillars Community Service handles, uh, Community Nurse handles a host of things. That includes addictions. But according to our community needs assessment, um, the residents stated that they wanted something that specializes in addictions. The Way Back Inn, that's what they specialize in. And the amount of that grant was ten thousand dollars.
Right. Yeah, I would suggest that's a big, uh, one of the bigger responsibilities that we have as a township government is, is to help that specific segment in need, because when they fall off the wagon, they're off the wagon. So, anything we can do to increase our support for addiction services is something I would support.
Right, and that's why we did, we went with the Way Back Inn. And they applied for a discretionary grant last year. We didn't know enough about them. We went investigative, met with them, and so on. And so, what, what happened is, is that it turns out it's a very good program. They are already serving people in our community. So, uh, I thought that, the, the board thought that that was a great idea to bring that in. And plus, they'll do an outreach to Riverside Township residents, so I think it's good.
There's that moment where they run out of alternates, they've run out of family members, and they literally run out of anywhere to go.
Right.
We have to be that stopgap. We, I, I, I'm very glad that we're addressing that, because at that moment, I've had friends at that moment.
Sure.
And it's either or, I mean, it's, it's one of those critical junctions, um, that, that we really need to have some outreach on. So, I commend the mental health board for going for that.
Thank you.
Um, and then you do have ten thousand in here for the special rec, just as a placeholder, is that correct?
No.
It says, um, what is it? Uh, Special Recreation Support?
Yes, what that is, is as the mental health board, what we do, what we're going to do or thinking of doing, it has to be approved by the board, uh, at our, our March meeting, is helping out Riverside Township residents with the cost of special recreation. There are fees associated with, uh, these recreational services. And going through the logistics of it, we are going to offer to help offset those for Riverside Township residents, those fees, including transportation. So, that's what we have for special recreation.
So-
Providing the service end of it, not the recreational end of it.
Uh, because some of the programs that the, the Riverside, the town of Riverside is considering, um, includes those services, the transportation and the like. So, would it almost for us be a, a transfer, not an increase? I mean, we, if Riverside offers these services, would that reduce this line item and-
No.
Transfer over?
Because what Riverside had was, I believe they was called Gateway.
Right.
They have now moved forward that they're going to go to a special recreation, they got called WSSRA, which the village pays a cost, a fee, which is associated with that. That fee starts off at, uh, I think that the first year is twenty-seven thousand, and it tears up to, I believe the final cost is fifty thousand, fifty-five thousand dollars. That's a recreational program that the village pays for that. What we wanted to do, because North Riverside came to us and said, can you help us support that? On the mental health board, we couldn't support that. So, we came up with a program that would help out the township residents get those programs so their children could go. They have a lot of expenses with children with special needs, because I'm sure everybody on the board knows. So, that's what we come up with, but we're still going through the logistics of it. But in another week, we should be ready to go and vote on it.
Oh, good. Um, because I know the WSSRC one doesn't-
RA.
RA does not, um, cover the transportation, but the other one that Riverside is considering does do that.
WSSRA is one of the few that will pick you up at your door. C-Spar is one that you have to bring your child to a drop-off point. You also have to have, excuse me, um, to be there to pick up your child. If you're not there, there's a problem. This is door-to-door service. WSSRA is.
Right, all right.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other trustees have a report?
I do request or a suggestion, um, for special meetings, for, uh, sponsorships, things that we sponsor and they have tables and they're available. Uh, would we be able to do something like a signup genius? Where we can go in and just click a button and say, I'm going to that fundraiser, or I'll be at that meeting. Uh, it's a real simple process to set up. I could probably do it for you in about five minutes. Uh, but it would help me very much organize my trustee activities.
Okay.
If you Google signup genius-
I'm sure, yeah. Signup genius or, I mean, there's, there's a lot of, there's Google calendars and things like that.
Right.
Um, let me see if Andrew could set something else, something up.
I thought we talked about like a calendar in the past, like a township calendar.
We spoke about it last month.
Just to bring it up, yeah.
But, uh, you're requesting like, uh, I know, I use Outlook, and so when people do send a meeting request, it automatically goes to my Outlook.
Right. Outlook's a little different, but, um, something along those lines, where we schedule the, um, special meeting and, and here, uh, and some kind of notification. Um, the opioid things that we had, uh, just kind of a, a schedule of events that, that we as trustees should go to, would be interested in that kind of thing. So, um, it could just be a, a document or signup genius, something that would allow us to kind of see what's going on, what's coming up, and schedule it for you.
We could include all the events from the Village of Riverside and Brookfield and North Riverside on there too. Because, I mean, the Presbyterian pancake breakfast, the scouts completely forgot about that one.
It's always the first time.
I, but I have, I don't come through the downtown area to see the, the poster and I can tell you-
I was checking the newspaper.
Yeah, mark your calendar for that, that's the fifteenth of April.
So, something of that to, to-
All right, yes.
Organize that part of stuff, you know, the Lions Dinner, the, the North Riverside Scholarship thing, the golf outing, the opioid, uh, presentation, special meetings.
So, um, as I mentioned before, the, I've been asked to attend the Hauser assemblies this Friday. Um, that's the kickoff to their food drive. And it, and I was just, I will forward, um, the email. It came this afternoon when I was with a client, so I didn't really have a chance to, um, to forward it to all of you. But it, uh, it showed that three times each grade level will have a separate assembly in the auditorium. I had promised to be there and say a few words. And if any of you want to, let me know, because they have to know who's coming so that they can check in. So, I will, I will forward that. And, yeah, we'll work on, on some kind of a tickler file, kind of a-
Yeah, 'cause then it'd be nice to have that on the calendar to show that even if I'm, I can't go, but now you're going, and then I could say, oh, yes, our supervisor was at so-and-so today. You know what I mean?
Right.
Or last week, she was visiting so-and-so, you know, or just out and about in the community type stuff.
Okay. Very good. All right, Kim, let's move on then. Uh, new business. We, you have a draft of the newsletter. Um, we're featuring a few of our special programs or however you want, special things we do.
Yeah. Yeah, did, I don't know if Andrew put that together or-
Yes, he did. He laid it all out, a lot of the, um, actually, I had, uh, I had given him some information, and then we got your information about the opioid. So, he kind of merged the two and put in as much detail as we could. We tried to use some photographs to break it up. Uh, he's got some nice graphics in there. You see the exercise class and movies and all that is in there. And, uh, that one box, we will, uh, well, I guess we'll just put something like "coming soon", um, room usage at the town hall for expanded room usage, something in that order.
Couple, couple things.
Yes.
Not too many, just small, small things. Uh, first of all, it looks great. Uh, first of all, the, um, the Lions Club Chicken Dinner.
Yes.
Is there, is there a reason why we're advertising that, uh, particular event and not other events?
Well, for one, it's in our building and we, um, you know, we've had a, a big partnership with them for it for a long time.
Understand, understand.
And it's one of the bigger events in the community.
Yeah, I, I just want to be careful with it though.
Right, I, I agree, I agree.
Because then Ra is gonna be like, well, we're not advertising for them and the thing, or, you know what I mean, just-
Yeah, I think it's the first bigger event that's happened since we've started this new format.
Yeah.
And I think in the future, we certainly would, um, you know, especially if it's in the town hall.
Yeah. No, I get it, I just, I just, so I just want to point that out there, I know. Uh, second thing, did Andy do, did, did he do something with the graphic of the Riverside Township building? Because it looks a lot cleaner. It really does, it just, it looks cleaner.
Well, you know what, sometimes in this kind of a setting, in this, this size, I mean, that's kind of like what's on our business cards. Sometimes if you get too big, then all of that shadowing gets a little crazy. He, I don't know what he used there. We had requests from a couple of places for, and now I, I think it's called Vector. It's another formatting way where it actually, it digitizes in a different way. It's a, it becomes a mathematical formula. And we've been, we were asked by somebody we gave a grant to, and then also the organization that's doing the other plaque in honor of Judy that's still going into the, um, auditorium. They, they act for, asked for it in that format, so I, I put Andy on the hunt, and he did find, uh, a way of converting it into that. I don't know that it's the best, I think that there's different levels of that, but it was a free one that we did, so maybe he used that there. I don't, I think it's our typical drawing, maybe it's just because of the size, it looks a little more crisp.
It just looks, it looks clean, uh, and I liked it, it looks great. It looks great. Another thing that I had is I really like the format, but I mean, can we get like a little bit more graphics, a little bit? I just, this is a lot of text and a lot, just, just a little bit more graphics, you know? And like the first page here where it says the Township Board Awards Grants and then you have the Mental Health Board, it kind of, all the text kind of bleeds together, just like you did on the second page where you had that green part and the clean part, you know, maybe they can, maybe he can do that or some, some way to just break, break up all the text just a little bit. And especially the page three, I mean, it's all white, you know, with all the text and just a little bit more like the background, like kind of, you know, kind of break it up a little bit, make it more graphically appeasing to the, to the eye. And then finally, the last thing I had, do you think maybe he could come up with a name for the newsletter? Like something, I don't know.
Township Tattlet?
Yeah, yeah, that, I like that. That is great. That was like, we had that planned, you know.
Township Tattlet.
Yeah.
That screams about when the township was founded to me, but.
Well, something, you know, something catchy, something kind of cool, you know? Maybe not for this one, but you know, for the next one, whatever, I mean.
We could have a contest to name the newsletter.
Yeah.
Actually, that's a good idea, yeah. Why not? Actually, is that, seriously, that's a good idea.
That could be a good idea, yeah.
One thing I will suggest or say is, it is a lot of words. I know people that literally don't read anymore. They say, if you hand this, I'm not going to read it.
Well, which is why, you know, we tried to space it and all that. Yeah, I understand, I understand. You want to convey the information. I'll, I'll look back at it and we'll see if we can edit down and put in some more white space, yeah.
And getting to be the old man that I am, I like large type. So if you reduce the amount of words.
Then we can do it in bigger, bigger font, yes. Okay, yeah. Alright.
Other than that, very good, very nice at home. And trustee Clark, look out in the, your inbox then, on your, on your mailing address. Because to watch, to see if the postmaster's letter is one for her whole building.
Oh, yeah.
Or four, four, you know what I mean?
Right.
Right, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I also, when we get to that point, I'm going to see about getting a few hundred extra copies.
And put them out.
Well, we do, we have put them out. We had some and we do put them out and they are picked up, but we have, for example, the senior fair coming up and, you know, some of it speaks for itself. Well, I'll bring it up under something else. Yeah, but, so I, I just want to see how much more, usually, once you're running it, then they become cheaper and cheaper the more you run, so. Alright, duly noted, we'll try to clean that up and I'll give you another draft. Okay? And, but we do want to get this out.
Yeah, let's.
Do you need our approval?
I don't think you need our approval. Do you need our approval?
If you're, if you're satisfied basically with the content and punch it up a little bit, okay.
Yeah, I think everything's fine, just clean up and we're good to go, I think, right? I mean.
Right, the only other thing.
We didn't take a vote on this last time, did we?
I just thought we said it was good to go.
Yeah.
Yeah. It only.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
The one thing that strikes me is we probably, probably should put in something about the annual town meeting, just, just that it's coming up. I mean, I don't think we're going to get a rush for it, but I just realized that we don't have anything in there about it.
Yeah, but I, I think, just use your discretion, supervisor, I mean, you can just.
Okay, thank you. Okay, communication planning, I think you were given some information on a meeting I've had. So one of these, the constituent outreach consultants is something, that's an organization that trustee Dropka had gotten a proposal from about some of the kinds of contact they do or kinds of communications they have. This is really, this is not really for a decision, I don't think, at this time, but having met with this Wisdom Bridge, this is someone that Fran actually sent my way and we had a very good meeting and he's, you know, he's very hands-on, very approachable and has a small team of people, that's somebody we could get a quote from when we go to some of the other things. One of the things he recently started up was a constant contact thing for Nutri-R, he works very heavily with Nutri-R. So you may want to just check out Nutri-R's website. You've got some, some links here, you might want to take a look at some of those, just to see the kind of work they do or the kinds of things we might want to consider in terms of communication planning, especially now that we've put into the budget to update our website as well. Any questions or comments on that?
At the, when we do go out, we will put an RFP in, we will put an RFP out.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yes.
But as long as we have it in the budget that we're going to be spending on website.
Right, then we could put an RFP.
Stuff that we cover here, yeah.
Could I recommend that we appoint a subcommittee? I don't think the full board needs to go redo our website. I just went through a massive redoing of my trade association and it took a lot of legwork. It's not something you can just say, poof, go do it and I'll write you a check. So maybe we appoint two trustees and a supervisor or a subcommittee, some kind of group to actually look into it, see what our needs are and then kind of do some of that legwork for the board.
Okay.
I'd be willing to be one of them. I just went through it, I developed five websites, I'm rather conversant, all that stuff. I never thought I would be. But search words and engine operators, all of that stuff, so I think it's a bigger lift than we're thinking and I'd like to do it right, because if you do it right, it's fabulous.
Okay.
So just a suggestion.
Is that on the website or general communications or?
Well, this, this kind of communication strategy, because you have a Twitter feed for us might not be the best idea, but it is kind of the standard package. If we are going to do Facebook, who's going to update it? Has to be done on it, yeah. So those are the kind of things that we kind of have to add our ducks in a row before we send out our RFP and it, it's a longer process than just, okay, let's do it and then have it done.
Anyone else interested in serving out such a committee?
I would just like to add one other, I'd really like to see if there is a website designer or builder in Riverside Township that we can also get a.
Well, actually, your, your organization used a local, right?
Yeah, Dia Digirati is a really good one.
Very good, thank you. Alright, you have in your packets on the next item, an advisory question that came in. It did come in and I'm sorry that the staff did not stamp it when it was received, but I will assure you that it did come in before the March first deadline. And this was a petition to put this resolution up for discussion on the annual town meeting agenda and there's a requirement as to, it has to be requested by a certain date. The deputy clerk did look at all those names and try to verify that those were actually voters. I can't tell you if those are signatures or printed names in some cases, those are, you know, people sign all different ways, so I don't know about that, but there were the adequate number, it has to be fifteen residents and voters, registered voters in the township to put forth something like that. What is your pleasure?
There is a typo in here, I believe. In the second to the last paragraph, it says two thousand sixteen township meeting. So based on that, I can't vote for this.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I, okay, so, so according to the township code, I don't know how this is actually adhered to here, because, I mean, did our lawyer say anything? Because the township code, I don't think we, there is a vote here that, to accept it or not.
No, the, it's not a matter of accepting. Our responsibility at this meeting would be to approve the agenda for the annual town meeting. That has to be done either now or at a special meeting because those must be published by March twenty-sixth. The agenda and the notice for the annual town meeting must be published by March twenty-sixth and it is up to this board to set the agenda. So not less than fifteen days before the annual meeting, the township board shall adopt an agenda for the annual meeting. Agenda must include any elector items properly submitted by March first prior to the annual meeting. Agenda must be included in the meeting notice that is approved by the township board.
Oh, is this properly submitted with the wrong date on it?
Yeah, I, so trustee Clark brought up the fact that because you're looking at this and then there was petitions that were sent out with this particular date on it so that people were signing it with incorrect information, which was listed on there. That's item number one. Item number two is just a, you know, basic look-through at the petitions. I don't believe, and I could be wrong, but I don't believe that we have solidified and totally identified that there are in fact fifteen valid signatures of registered voters on this list. I, I, I think we have to do our due diligence and make sure that there are fifteen signatures of registered voters on the list and I don't know if that is accurate.
This is also on this, there, with the exception of one person on this list, they're all, this group is all one neighborhood in Riverside. So, and I'm not really quite sure what they're asking us to do. I wish there was somebody here.
This is, this doesn't.
I mean, I don't, you know, and I, I believe in climate change. We talk about it a lot at my company, so I'm well aware of the ins and outs, but I'm not really sure what they're asking us to do.
Okay, so my understanding here is that this petition is simply asking this topic to be put on the annual meeting agenda. And they have to petition to do that. Pardon?
The township annual meeting.
The township annual meeting.
I just don't think that we would be the right venue.
Well, so. No, actually, this, this has happened at prior annual.
I understand they, them wanting to get something on the annual meeting, but I'm not sure the township annual meeting is necessarily the right venue for climate change discussion.
The petition is to put this advisory referendum on the ballot in November, but in order to do that, it either, to put an advisory referendum on the ballot either comes from us or it comes from something that comes up at the annual meeting. And you can't just show up at the annual meeting and decide to just announce it there and take a vote on it. It has to be submitted through a petition situation like this is something like this and then go before the annual meeting for a vote, okay? But I, my, 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 where my stipulation, my questioning comes in at, not only did you bring up a very good point on the date being incorrect, but as, as well as in, I'm questioning the, the number of valid registered voter signatures. So I, I, I'm just kind of looking for direction from our lawyer because I have gone through the township code and the Illinois statute on petitions and I think we need some direction for our lawyer, from our lawyer on this.
Don't, on a petition, don't these have to be all signatures and not printed to be valid?
Well, that, that would be, that would be number one, yeah.
Well, we can't even put this on there, we're just with this typo in it, you know, because these people signed something that was incorrect.
It has a date of twenty sixteen.
In twenty sixteen, it's past. You can tell, like, they probably didn't read it.
I think that, I think that it's, our lawyer really has to.
And I have a call in to him, he didn't call back.
Okay.
He was on another call when I contacted him and he didn't, as soon as you called back to my attention and I did not, I did not hear back from him and I was here till almost, almost four, so beyond our regular hours and I've checked my email since, and even email.
Well, then I think we have no alternative, but we cannot approve the annual meeting agenda tonight.
We can't approve putting this on the agenda.
Well, I don't know, but I don't, I don't, I don't know. I think this is, I really firmly believe that that would be a question for our lawyer though.
Well, it has a typo in it.
Well, I understand that, but, and I, and all the other questions that I came up with too, but I think that we need some direction here from our lawyer. I don't want to do anything and get people all upset and everything, you know, I want a firm answer on to why we can't accept this and put it onto the annual meeting agenda. You know what I mean? I want to make sure that crystal clear. I, I know what you're saying and I completely agree with you and I have some other problems myself, but I don't think that we can, you know, reject or approve this thing without legal guidance on this.
I agree with you. I agree, we might need legal guidance, but on this issue, but this is black and white. This information on this particular resolution is incorrect.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know.
So let's get, you know, our guidance from our attorney, but if we have to make a decision on this tonight.
Can we amend the?
We can amend it if we didn't present it.
No, the agenda, I mean, can we approve the agenda if they come back to us and the lawyer approves it?
They can't come back to us.
It's April tenth, it's the next meeting.
Well, we have to, we have to post the agenda by, by March twenty-sixth.
So.
And they can't resubmit this.
No.
It's beyond the date.
So we can't, as I said, we can't put this on the agenda with the incorrect.
The other thing that I would like to just make mention of, I have never seen this until we got out of walks and this should have been presented.
To the clerk.
To, to me.
Yeah.
And I'm supposed to receive this by March first.
Right.
So, you know.
Well, we're going to have to, is it a special meeting that we're going to have to call on this?
I don't think so. I think we can't do it. It wasn't presented.
We can't do it without legal approval, right?
So I would say that it's, it's our office's error that you weren't notified. I did not know that, that the deputy clerk did not contact the clerk when this was received.
And also, there should have been some date stamped on this when we received it.
I agree, I agree.
Because of the time sensitivity to it.
Right, right, I agree.
And we need the time to verify the signatures, I mean.
I, the only thing I can do is get an opinion on this from the lawyer and I think we need to probably meet specially just to approve the annual meeting agenda, because if he tells me that's a de minimis item, the, you know, the date, or if, if in fact he says, you have to, you know, go to the county records and see if those are actual signatures, if that's how people sign.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think a, a special meeting for incorrectly submitted application is necessary. If it's not, if it was, it's submitted incorrectly, we can't consider it.
But we don't know if it was actually submitted incorrectly. I'm, what I'm saying here is I believe that it was submitted incorrectly. I think that a couple other trustees believe that it was submitted incorrectly, but I don't know if that will pass the muster from the, from our lawyer, you know?
Well, what's the policy?
We're looking.
This has never happened before.
Never happened, so you got to get legal opinion.
We're going to have to have the lawyer make a determination and we're going to have to at least meet for ten minutes to approve the agenda before the twenty-sixth of March.
I, I don't see why we can't approve the agenda with why this would preclude us from approving the agenda.
Because it. Because it currently, on the agenda that I, that's been listed for you.
It's currently on.
It's on there. Because it was. Pardon?
It's on our new business agenda?
No, it's on, following this petition, you have something that's got a little border around it in your book. It looks like this. No, after that, there's another.
So, this is the agenda.
That's today's agenda. Fol- in your book, under new business, following this petition, there is a page that would be the annual meeting, annual town meeting agenda, which the board, as I read to you before, must approve and then post.
Can we approve the annual town meeting with the stipulation pending the determination by lawyer?
I mean, it's fine if we have to have a special meeting on it, but we'd need to set a policy that you can't just drop stuff like this. We have to have a petition that, that is formal legal, that, that they need to fill out. Again, I mean.
Now, the, the law doesn't say what that petition has to look like.
Well, see, and that's, see, that's a question for a lawyer because I was scalvaging the state statute, and I found this part of the ten I L S five where it talks about petitions.
And?
Well, there you go. So, this is not the township code, 'cause the township code says one thing. But then this says for, you know, ten I L C S five twenty-eight dash three, form of petition for public question. Such petition shall be signed by the registered voters of the political subdivision or district or precinct or combination of precincts in which the question of public policy is to be submitted in their own proper persons only. And opposite the signature of each signer, there should be the residential address shall be written or printed. Okay, but signatures, there you go. So, if you go by signatures, there's not fifteen signatures here.
Oh, there are more than fifteen.
No, no.
No, if you'll note, there's some question marks.
Oh, okay.
There were check marks.
There's, there's.
Oh, okay.
That, those check marks simply indicated that the deputy clerk had compared it to the list of registered voters, a name that was legible from it at that address. And I, again, I'm sorry that I had no idea that, that was not conveyed to the clerk that, that it had come in.
So, one, two, three.
There's also, on a petition, you're supposed to have a printed signature, I mean, a printed signature of person.
Well, that's what says.
And those are, there's some printed.
I, I, I don't, I don't know. I don't know the law. I'm just reading it, you know what I mean? I'm not the, I don't have the law degree, so I don't.
Yeah, that's what, well, if we go on here on the signature she couldn't confirm, we still had sixteen that she confirmed.
Yeah, but.
Did she confirm the signatures or the addresses?
No, she did not have the signatures available, the, the.
I'm just not at all comfortable taking action based upon this document. I mean, I, I, I understand that it was submitted. It was submitted incorrectly. The form is incorrectly filled out. There are questions about signatures. I don't think it's, it's incumbent upon us to take action on anything that comes across our desk. I think we need to, I mean, I'm not, I don't know, I mean, this is.
Well, you know, the information in this petition is incorrect due to that typo.
Right.
And so, to me, that's, we can't put it on the agenda. It doesn't matter whether, I mean, and then they don't have enough signatures too that we can verify. And it wasn't presented correctly. I don't, you know, those are three good reasons that we know that, of, of where we don't need a legal opinion on not to put it on the agenda.
So, why don't we amend the agenda and then vote on the amended agenda?
No.
So, strike that item from the agenda, approve that agenda. And if I get a legal opinion that says this should have been accepted, then we have a special meeting.
Right.
Okay, I'd be good with that.
So, we need a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion that, uh, due to the errors in the petition and, uh, that we do not put it on the town meeting agenda unless we get a legal opinion that says we have to.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to strike from the annual town meeting agenda, the question, the item seven A, climate change resolution, if I may interpret, and approve the agenda without that item unless we get a lea- legal opinion saying that we must include it. Is that?
Right, and then do we need to add that we need a special meeting, or that will just happen?
We would need to have a special meeting to.
But I don't think that needs to be in the motion.
That, that goes without saying, if, if this.
All right, so, we have a first and second.
Yes, we have a motion and a second. And because of the nature of this, even though it's not money, I would ask for a roll call.
You want a roll call?
Yes, please.
Uh, trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lufer?
Yes.
Supervisor Will?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Also, one other point, if we get the, the legal opinion that states that, uh, we are correct in our not putting this on the agenda.
I will notify you.
Thank you very much, and the reasons why.
Yeah, yeah.
To the person.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
You're right, too.
Okay, sorry, making my notes up. Okay. Next item on our agenda is the budgetary transfer requested by assessor.
I make a motion that we approve this transfer.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve this budgetary transfer of appropriations that would be moving five hundred dollars from the assessor equipment and transfer such item to the assessor office salaries and, uh, making the adjusted appropriations, assessor equipment, four thousand five hundred and the assessor office salaries, twenty-nine thousand five hundred. Any questions?
How does this affect their, like, their salary?
Bottom line is, it was, the salary was, the transfer is needed because there were so many issues that she had to get some, uh, people work more hours than anticipated. And that she had budget money in, uh, equipment that wasn't going to be used and wanted to serve the public, so.
Hmm, definitely. And there's no prohibition against that?
No, no, this is just how it has to be done. When, when things are moved around, you have to have an appropriation.
Roll call vote.
Transfer, yes. So, if there's no other questions or discussion, would the clerk please call the vote?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lufer?
Yes.
Supervisor Will?
Yes.
Motion carry. Uh, other man gets to sign this.
Okay.
Yes, I'm ready.
Can I make a motion to upgrade the pro twenty-eighteen in the QuickBooks?
I'll second that.
You certainly may, so.
Who's that?
Lufer.
Trustee Lufer.
Okay, so, so we have a motion to approve the purchase of QuickBooks new version because we were told by our payroll service that they'll no longer be able to deal with the other. Or no, we were told by QuickBooks they wouldn't support it, so.
Do, sorry, do we have, uh, QuickBooks support? So, the new version comes in, there's new things. Could we maybe budget a, um, three hundred, five hundred dollar fee to have someone come in to kinda update the staff on, on new ways to do QuickBooks?
I think that that's why we have someone on staff who's pretty versatile with, with software, and he's, he's pretty good about learning and teaching.
Yeah, but you always use, I get it, um, but having new eyes come in for a small cost.
Right, well, if we find that that's necessary, I think we've got enough in, in the budget to, to do that when, when they happen.
It's always nice to have training when you have new software coming in.
Okay.
We need a roll call.
Right.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lufer?
Yes.
Supervisor Will?
Yes.
Motion carry.
These are some items for your information. The Aging Well Month, um, I think that we'll be putting in some of the exercise dates for that.
Yes.
And, uh, that's just for your information.
I'm Allison Scanlon representing Aging Care Connections. Also, just as a reminder for items that you wanted to include in the event calendar for Aging Well Month, like your exercise program, for example, um, those are, that form is due to me by May twenty-third because we have to send it to the publisher by.
By March twenty-third.
March.
You said May. I thought, wait, that'd be awful late for a.
Yeah, thank you for that correction.
What if they change the dates?
Right, by Friday, um, March twenty-third in order for it to get to the printer in time. And I am running out of dates, uh, space on the calendar. We have over sixty programs that are gonna be on the calendar for this year. Um, and as a reminder, uh, parting to your earlier conversation about the, the number of attendees in your exercise program, um, so including it in the calendar will obviously increase, greatly increase the exposure for the program. So, the, uh, calendar of events for Aging Well Month are going to be included in the Tribune, um, the Tribune, uh, Doings, um, edition of the Tribune and the Riverside Brookfield Landmark, and that includes twenty-six thousand households. However, it's Lyons Township, Riverside Township, and Supervisory Township. So, um, when you are considering putting the exercise class in and anything else you want to include, like the radio players, for example, um, I really hope that you do include it, but just back to your conversation about having many people in those programs just know that that calendar is going out to twenty-six thousand households and goes beyond the scope of Riverside Township. Beyond that, um, as I mentioned to you, um, uh, previously is that Supervisor Will, is that I do, as part of Aging Care Connections, have a monthly calendar that I send out every six to eight weeks. And I could also include any of your older adult programs in that calendar. Um, they can be ones that have a fee or not have a fee, but that goes out to, um, residents in those three townships as well.
Okay.
Alison, just to clarify, um, on the calendar for May, that, that's due by March twenty-third?
That's correct.
Okay, and, um, if we do do this trip to the zoo and I do charge five or ten dollars per person?
So, that would not go in the.
And that, we have free.
Yeah, calendar, however, it could go in that other calendar.
Okay.
It has both four fee and three programs. It doesn't have the same distribution. It's down to twenty-six thousand households. It's moving to like three or four households.
Okay.
And then the other thing that maybe you want to do in addition to, um, collecting the attendance for your exercise program, you might wanna ask them where they heard about the program, and that could better inform where you invest money in, um, advertising the program going forward. And so, you could find out if the landmark ads are doing it or flyers at the fair or some of that kind of thing are helping you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, um, and then other informational item is this Department of Veterans Affairs. Don't know if you wanna do anything with that, but you might want to, um, take a look at that and, uh, let me know this. They need supporting documents by July, so we've got some time here for nominations for, for these, uh, awards and the guidelines, so if you would look that over. And if there's nothing else, then we are up to the warrants. And, um, do I have a volunteer to?
Do you have the thing for us to read, is that?
Yeah, I have it here somewhere. There it is.
I'll read it.
Just put the numbers there.
I move that the board authorize and ratify payments of the bills identified on the general warrant March of two thousand eighteen in the amount of eight thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-three cents.
Wait a second.
Yes. Do you want me to continue reading? We'll do everything.
Did you say, wait a second?
No, you said, oh, I thought you said, wait, wait a second.
And we take that one separately, right? And then we take the others?
Yeah. So, we have a motion to accept the general warrants in the amount of eight thousand five hundred seventeen dollars and fifty-three cents and a second. And, um, would the clerk please call the roll? It's been too long of a meeting, that's.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lufer?
Yes.
Uh, Supervisor Will?
Yes.
Motion carry.
My apologies, okay.
Good. I make a motion that the board ratify and authorize payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants. Utility warrant, uh, and these are all in the month of March two thousand eighteen. Utility warrant, one thousand six hundred twenty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. Payroll warrant, uh, sixteen thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars and forty-seven cents. Health warrant, one thousand six hundred nine dollars and ninety cents. The grants, thirteen thousand four hundred dollars, no cents. General assistance warrant, two thousand four hundred dollars. Township radio players, two hundred dollars. Food pantry warrant, fourteen dollars and twenty-nine cents.
I second.
You know what? I have one correction.
I do too.
Um, I had, well, today I had one more, um, general assistance, so that should actually be twenty-seven hundred.
For, I already gave that, for the twenty-seven hundred.
On the general assistance warrant, there should be one more, check number eight 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 six, uh, for a flat grant of three hundred dollars.
I amend my motion to include the, uh, special general assistance or?
Was it three hundred?
Oh, it was an additional three hundred dollars.
And that was general assistance or?
General assistance flat grant, yes.
I'm gonna second.
I second.
So, I have a motion and a second to approve the warrants as listed, those being a utility warrant in the amount of one thousand six, one thousand six hundred twenty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. And this print is getting smaller all the time. Payroll warrant in the amount of sixteen thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars and forty-seven cents. Health warrant in the amount of one thousand six hundred nine dollars and ninety cents. Grants warrant in the amount of thirteen thousand four hundred dollars. General assistance in the amount of two thousand seven hundred dollars. Radio, township radio players in the amount of two hundred dollars and food pantry warrant in the amount of fourteen dollars and twenty-nine cents. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lufer?
Yes.
Uh, Supervisor Will?
Yes.
Motion carry.
I make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you.